Good morning, everyone, and welcome to your Board of County Commissioners meeting on July 19th, 2022. Could I invite you to please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Heavenly Father, when we stop and pause our busy lives for just a moment, we are reminded that life is a gift. We are reminded that everyone has abilities, not disabilities. We are reminded that often opportunities come disguised as problems or challenges. As we are reminded that each day is a gift, we understand that with each new day, we have an opportunity to make a difference in the lives of people we know, or even to complete strangers. What it takes to provide words of encouragement, what it takes to show support for people going through tough times, what it takes to be the difference in someone's life, starts with a grateful heart that is looking to share a blessing. Father, may our hearts be always grateful, and may we always seek to be the just-in-time blessing that someone needs today. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the Father of the United States of America, in his love and freedom, one nation united by God, in this long, routine, and vast world.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to gently remind everyone, if you've not silenced your cellphone, if you please do so now. This time, we'll open up for public comment, and this little item will be on anything that is not a public hearing later in today's Seeing no movement, we'll move on to proclamations. I'm sorry, presentations. There are no minutes to be discussed, nor proclamations for today. And at this time, I believe Kara and both Enrique are coming forward. Thank you.
Morning, Commissioner. How are you this morning?
Good morning.
We are here to present the Safety Awards from the Safety Council of Palm Beach. They were awarded in May, but we always like to make a big deal when employees receive something. So we always solicit nominations for two categories, which is COVID-19's Outstanding Service Award and Heroism Award. So we had five nominations. All employees were recipients. They all won it. One was not able to be here with us, but I am going to read their nominations and call them up for their plaques. So I'm going to start with the COVID-19 Outstanding Service Award, which our first one is Kenya Benjamin for Outstanding Leadership and Initiative. Kenya helps train and mentor staff on safety in their regular responsibilities and in response to active areas. Most recently, during non-business hours, she's helping the custodial teams by continuing to proactively spray the major facilities as special request for active possible infected areas. Congratulations. All right. Next up, we have Mark Matthews. Mark, for his willingness to step in and help where and when needed. Mark would meet trucks for deliveries at the logistics center, prepare deliveries for distribution, and deliver supplies for the roaming COVID testing center and vaccine centers. When COVID was at its peak, Mark would work as a team weekly during non-business hours to spray major facilities. Congratulations. Alrighty. And for our last COVID-19 Outstanding Service Award is Josh McBride. Josh was rushed into a scenario outside of his normal day-to-day workload and immediately adapted to the needs of operations. The duties not only included the responsibilities of a supervisor, however, also included the emergency use of equipment to keep day-to-day operations of the landfill going smoothly. With his positive attitude and his drive for excellence, there were no slowdowns to incoming haulers and no interference with daily operations. Congratulations. And now, last, sorry. We have our final award, which is the Heroism Award, and I love this story. Jake Walton is our Heroism Award recipient. Mr. Walton was looking out his window when he noticed a lady who was walking from her car towards our building, and she looked like she was losing her balance. He immediately called a coworker, and they both ran downstairs to assist. When they came out of the front doors, they noticed that several other individuals walked right by the lady and just looked the other way. When they finally got to her, she was almost about to fall to the ground. Mr. Walton held her up while his coworker ran inside to get a chair and to let the officer in the lobby know that we are having a medical emergency outside to call for an ambulance. The team then sat the citizen on a chair, comforted her, and told her help was on the way. They even requested an umbrella to cover her from the sun from the DMV staff. She could have fallen on the ground and hurt herself badly. Worse yet, she could have fallen where no one could have seen her and died. Jake is being recognized for acting immediately when no one else would and ensuring that the citizen was able to receive the help she so desperately needed. He was truly a good Samaritan in every sense of the word. Thank you. Thank you so much for your support, Commissioners.
Thank you. And on behalf of the Board, congratulations to each one of you that got the awards. But I will tell you, having been through the COVID as we each have over these past couple of years, I think the entire staff, and it's not to take one away from the ones recognized, but our entire staff were heroes during that timeframe. Before we move into our next presentation, I'd like to remind everyone that an agenda item 10B4, which is on our regular agenda, has been pulled and will be heard at a later date. We'll move forward with today's consent agenda. Is there any item of Commission which is pulled for separate vote and/or discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull K5 just for a comment, and K7 maybe for some discussion with staff. K5 is the approval for Sunland Garden's Stormwater Master Plan. Had some conversation with the neighborhood when this came through, and they wanted to extend their gratefulness to the Board of County Commissioners for support in moving that forward. The community is in desperate need of drainage and roadway repairs and/or, in most cases, building. So they just wanted me to extend their gratitude to each of you for your support in this effort now and in the future. The other one is K7, and that is Fee in lieu of, and this is off of Oleander. A new subdivision is being built there. But we are taking great pains to build the sidewalk on the eastern side of Oleander. And you may recall that there was a terrible accident in which a child was killed on Oleander. And so where this particular subdivision is, it's in the middle of Oleander. There isn't a corner there to go crosswalk to crosswalk, or a corner to corner with a crosswalk. So I've asked to have a discussion with Patrick, you know, if it would be possible to include that that subdivision create a corner on each side of the entryway with crosswalks going over to the east side, to that sidewalk, because it appears as though we're only going to do the east side, at least in the near future. So I just wanted to raise that to your attention, that without a sidewalk on that side, there's really no opportunity for those folks to leave that subdivision without just walking right into the middle of the street.
Commissioner, and again, this is for discussion. I'm willing to listen to our staff, but I'd already had this mark to pull myself for discussion, not so much on that item, but I need to hear from staff whether or not putting a crosswalk without any type of signalization, especially if it's in the middle of a road and not at a recognized corner, is not a safety hazard upon itself. Now, having said that, I was looking at more making sure that funding stayed on Oleander Avenue, because as many of us know, that's got a lot of issues coming down the road with the railroad crossings and having to get those permits and so forth on the extension of it, but also in lieu of the cost of concrete, those prices are going up on the sidewalk. We've already in the middle of doing, and the lack of availability is the other part of it.
Right, right.
So I'm willing to listen to the staff's discussion on that, but I would just like to add my question to it.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to bring it forward, because I don't think, you know, any of us had that conversation, but Patrick shared his points of view, just like you said, in the middle of the roadway without a corner to corner.
Right. Thank you, members of the Commission. Patrick Dian, I'm here, Public Works Director here with Dan Zoralek, our county engineer. So there's a couple of points that were brought up. First of all, to the Commissioner's point about the raising costs of concrete, we actually did revise our unit prices for the amount that contractors or developers would pay towards the Fee in lieu of. We did that last year. We'll look at it again this year. We try to follow along with DOT's methodology. They've created some cost escalation, so we'll see that again. This particular parcel is on the west side of Oleander. To the Commissioner's point, mid-block crosswalks really need to be studied in detail, because they can tend to be an unexpected place for pedestrians to cross, for motorists, and it provides a false sense of security in certain aspects. So you really need to make sure that you have good sight, both on the approach and the departure. Those kinds of things really need some more investigation. Regarding what we have going on on Oleander right now, to the Commissioner's point, we have an active construction project from Midway Road up to Farmers Market, South Market Avenue, which is directly across the street from this particular development's location. The parcel to the north was granted a Fee in lieu of. In this particular location, one of the challenges that we have is that there's two parallel ditches on the west side of Oleander. One is for the road itself, another is a former North St. Lucy Canal that was provided to the county, so the county now owns it Fee Simple, but you have an issue with trying to cross that and meet ADA requirements. So there's just a lot of complexities that move into this, and that's why staff had suggested to receive the Fee in lieu of that can be used for any sidewalk project around the county that staff designates. We are actively working on two other projects along Oleander Avenue. We have a Safe Routs to School grant that's already in place for the segment from Farmers Market up to Edwards Road, and that we're preparing a Safe Routs to School grant application, which will necessitate some conceptual designs, cost elements, things like that, to support the application. That will be from Midway down to about Sager Avenue. So a lot of good sidewalk projects happening on Oleander Avenue right now.
Mr. Hutchinson, this is your area. I live next, I mean, right up the street from here, and so I travel it often, but I'll acquiesce to your thoughts, as you've been working on this sidewalk for a decade or more.
Mike, although I recognize your concern on crossing over, that's not isolated to just Oleander Avenue, and like has been stated, it's where do you cross it? Especially if it's not at an intersection that already is there. You can't just put one like we did out here, like the city did here in the middle of the road. And there's also signs that light up that go with that. Having said that, I would like to see the funding go toward, be dedicated back to Oleander, so it doesn't leave that in light of everything that's being done now. If in the future, the Board would like to start asking staff to investigate areas of where a better crossing would be, I would be open to that, because I'm thinking, and I know what the area that you're speaking specifically about as being they were crossing over to go to a school bus. And that, of course, is a school's issue, because they change those school bus stops. We don't. But where's the better location for an actual crossing on that? So until we have some answers, and like I said, those are very steep ditches, if you will, toward drainage, and I'm not sure anybody could ever afford to fill in both sides and put sidewalks on either side.
Good point. Okay. Well, I'm okay with this item. I just wanted to have that conversation, because as we, you know, always do, life, health, and safety is what we do here, and that was a question that I had. So thank you.
No, but I think it's something worth, you know, asking the staff to maybe give us an idea of what's involved and how that can be determined in the future, you know, on other areas. But on this particular one, today's the vote.
Very good.
So if I may, Board members, what I heard there was that the Board desires to designate these funds specifically for Oleander Avenue and for use for sidewalk studies or other types of sidewalk-related items for Oleander Avenue specifically. And we can certainly do that.
That's what I heard.
Right. Is there any other items? Seeing none, is there a motion to agree to the consent agenda?
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Zdowski and a second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to our first of two public hearings.
Good morning, Vice Chair Hutchinson and Commissioners Ben Bolser, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director for the Record. Start this real quick. Presenting item 9A1, which is the second reading for a county-initiated land development code text amendment relating to solar generation stations. In accordance with public notice requirements for this item, this item was advertised in the St. Lucy News Tribune on Thursday, July 7th, 2022. St. Lucy County is currently one of the top producers of solar energy in the state, with six solar generation sites permitted over the last four years, including over 1 million solar panels. The proposed ordinance encourages clean energy operations by streamlining the approval process and revising the land development code to comply with Florida statute, which was recently amended to require solar generation facilities to be listed as a permitted use in all agricultural zoning districts within unincorporated areas. These next two slides provide a summary of the changes that are addressed in the draft ordinance, which were also included in the staff report for this item. The definition of solar generation station was revised within Chapter 2 of the code to conform with industry standards and is consistent with Florida statute. Current language in the land development code requires solar generation stations to obtain a conditional use permit to locate within agricultural zoning districts, while the amended language eliminates this process and allows the facilities to be a permitted use in all agricultural zoning districts in accordance with the revised state statute. Additionally, the amendment would allow solar generation stations, as well as public and quasi-public support services for fire protection, as permitted uses within the research and education park overlay zone. The amendment would allow solar generation stations, situated within ag zoning districts, to proceed through the minor site plan process rather than a major site plan, and eliminate solar panels from the maximum lot coverage calculation by buildings. Additionally, because solar generation stations are considered very low-traffic generators, the amendment looks to exempt new facilities located within ag zoning districts from providing paved access and eliminates landscaping buffer requirements for solar generation stations within ag zoning districts if the parcel is not adjacent to an established residential use. The amendment also updates the code to be consistent with the 2020 Florida Building Code, which increased the distance that rooftop solar panels are required to be from the edge of the roof from two feet to three feet. The ordinance aligns the St. Lucy County Land Development Code with Florida statute and the building code, as well as encourages clean energy production and streamlines the development review process. The Planning and Zoning Commission, after June 16th, 2022 meeting, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance as written, and on July 5th, this Board authorized this morning's adoption hearing for the proposed ordinance as written. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions from the Board at this time? Before I open up for public comment, Ben, I have one question, and that's when you go to your slide number five that you had on the land development code, and this is on the regulation at the very bottom on moving the solar panels from the edge of the roof from two feet to three feet. Do we happen to know if ones that I have existing, are grandfathered in, or are they going to have to meet that new requirement?
If they're existing, they would be grandfathered in with the old requirement.
Okay, and what would change that? Would if they had to go put new panels up, or when does that get changed?
If they had to put new panels up, they would be required to meet the current Florida building code.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address the Board? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and come back to the Board. What is your pleasure?
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Barts, a second by Commissioner Zdowski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to our next public hearing, again, with dealing with the land development code text amendments. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. How are you this morning? I'm T. Santa Maria, Planning and Development Services Director for the Record, and I'm presenting Agenda Item A, excuse me, 9A2, a proposed land development amendment related to floodplain management, and this is the second hearing before the Board or the adoption hearing. So the amendment was noticed in the newspaper on July 7th, as required by the land development code. And this item presented before you today is a county-initiated text amendment to amend the floodplain management-related regulations, updating the elevation requirements for manufactured homes, and providing criteria for non-elevated structures. Overall, the proposed amendment is intended to reduce future flood damage and risk, maintain the county's community rating score, and associated federal flood insurance premium discounts, and this is the program we participate in, where if we exceed the minimum standards, it equates to discounts to our policyholders, to comply with FEMA policy and state guidance, improve community resilience, and enhance overall public health, safety, and welfare. And as a note, this proposed amendment was crafted and drafted and reviewed with staff from the Florida Division of Emergency Management, State Floodplain Management Office, which reviews these types of amendments for compliance as well. So the first portion of the amendment creates criteria to allow accessory structures below flood elevation, allowing wet floodproofing instead of having to elevate the structure or dry floodproof the structure, which means making it watertight. The criteria includes that accessory structures within Zones A and AE are one-story and not larger than 600 square feet and have flood openings, and if they are in the VE zone, they are not located below elevated buildings, so they're not an enclosure, and are not larger than 100 square feet. In both instances, the accessory structure needs to be anchored, have flood damage-resistant materials, and the systems and fixtures need to be elevated to base flood elevation plus one foot. And this proposed amendment is to comply with the FEMA policy that was recently issued and the associated state guidance, as noted at the bottom of your screen. The second portion of the amendment updates the elevation requirements of manufactured homes to require the structures to be elevated, so the bottom of the frame is at or above the base flood elevation plus one foot. This is the exact same requirement that all other homes need to meet based on the Florida Building Code in terms of flood elevation. And again, this amendment is proposed to satisfy the criteria within the community rating system program, which I'll go over a few more details on the next slide. As background, the National Flood Insurance Program is a federally subsidized flood damage insurance program administered by FEMA, and it provides insurance to communities that agree to adopt and enforce floodplain management ordinances that meet or exceed the federal standards. The community rating system is a voluntary program, where if you propose ordinances that exceed the minimum standards within the NFIP, then communities earn credits and discounts for their policyholders. They can range between a score nine to one, one being the highest, and discounts ranging between 5% and 45%. So recently, the CRS program, or Community Rating System program, updated their requirements for a Class 8 rating. It's actually a prerequisite to get to a Class 8, which requires all homes, including manufactured homes, to be elevated to base flood elevation plus one foot, where the base flood elevation has been determined. And you can see that on the very left bottom side of your screen in terms of the prerequisites that exist today. This is important, because St. Lucy County is currently a Class 6, receiving a 20% discount for its policyholders with federal flood insurance, and if the proposed amendment is not processed and adopted, then the county reverts back from a Class 6 to a Class 9, and we lose our discount of 20% and drop to a 5% discount. We are going to be evaluated by the community rating system this fall, and we are in a three-year cycle for review. So you can see on the bottom right-hand side on the table, if we do not propose this amendment and we drop from a Class 6 to a Class 9 over that three-year period, we would lose out on about $1.1 million in savings to our policyholders, and we have about 8,900 policyholders within this county. So with that, staff recommends approval of the proposed ordinance, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board?
Madam Chair, I just want to go back to the accessory structures. You know, there's conversations about tiny homes and as accessory to current homes and trying to deal with the housing issues. And it says up to 600 square feet. How does that play in, and, you know, do tiny houses as accessory structures fall into this category?
They will not fall into this category. They would actually be considered a residential structure, so they would have to meet the residential standards. This is for non-residential accessory structures, so like garages, sheds, and the like, and that's where those size limits apply to.
Okay. Thank you very much.
There's no further questions. We'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address the Board? Seeing no one, we'll move for closure, and we'll come back to the Board.
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Townsend, seconded by Commissioner Barts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And at this time, we'll move on to property cleanup MSBU assessment. Good morning, Ms. Geller.
Good morning, Board. For the record, Barbara Geller, MSBU Coordinator. Section 38-28, the Lot Cleanup of St. Lucy County's Code of Ordinance prohibits the accumulation of trash, junk, debris, living and non-living plant material, stagnant water, excessive growth of grass, weeds and brush, skylights, windows, and doors that are not watertight, and the keeping of fill-on property. If a property is found to be in violation of this article, the owner has noticed of the violation, and they must remedy the violation within 20 days or file an appeal within 15 days. If the owner fails to remedy or successfully appeal the violation, the county may undertake such actions, or, I'm sorry, such actions as necessary or useful to remedy the violation. The cost incurred by the county to remedy the violation shall be assessed against property. If the imposed assessment is not paid in full within 20 business days, the assessment is recorded as a lien and may be levied as a non-adlorm special assessment on the annual property tax bill and collected pursuant to Section 197.36 of the Florida statutes. There are two parcels on the 2022 Parcel Property Cleanup SAD Assessment Roll, with assessment amounts ranging from $611.70 to $904.26. The actions taken by the county to remedy the violation include, but are not limited to utilizing continuing service contractors for mowing, trimming bushes, shrubs, and trees, and securing windows, skylights, doors, and pools. Notice of this public hearing was mailed to affected property owners and published in the newspaper on June 28th, 2022. Staff recommends Board approval of the Property Cleanup Special Assessment District annual assessment roll and authorization for the Chair to sign documents as approved by the county attorney.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the Board, questions? Seeing none, we'll open up for public hearing. Seeing no movement, we'll come back to the Board. Zero motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Zdowski and seconded by Commissioner Barts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to our culvert MSBU assessment.
Again, for the record, Barbara Geller, MSBU Coordinator. The Board established a voluntary program giving eligible property owners the choice to apply for funding to replace failed driveway culverts, and then repay this funding through non-adlorm special assessments placed against the improved property collected in annual installments on the tax roll. Today's resolution, number 2022-119, is the assessment resolution as required by the county ordinance. The purpose of this resolution relates to the imposition and collection of special assessments to fund stormwater culvert improvements within the MSBU. of special assessments to fund stormwater culvert improvements within the MSBU, determine that real property therein will be specially benefited, establish the method of assessing and the cost of the improvements. Staff recommends Board approval of Resolution Number 2022-119 and authorization for the Chair to sign documents as approved by the county attorney.
Any questions once again from the Board? Seeing none, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just a comment. I have been very excited about this project since its inception. We have a lot of residents who have issues, and certainly in this economy. So the fact that we, as the county, are doing something to make it more affordable, because I will tell you that that is not true of some of our surrounding areas. And people just can't afford to come up with those funds all at once. So again, I'm very excited about this.
It's a great program.
Thank you.
Once again, we'll open up for public comment. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public hearing and come back to the Board as there are motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Townsend, seconded by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We've come to the end of our public hearings. We'll move on into the regular agenda. I believe there's a, on our next item, we will have a presentation given by Nicole Fogarty, Derek Cooper, and Terrence O'Leary. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Nicole Fogarty, Legislative Affairs Director. This morning, we're bringing to you St. Lucie Connect Program, a broadband program to provide Internet access. As you will remember, about a year ago, you had set aside $3 million of your American Rescue Plan dollars for a broadband initiative, most importantly, towards Internet access. And so what staff did is that we came together, and we did some research, given your direction, and we met with Comcast here. So with me today, I have Derek Cooper, the Vice President of External Affairs, as well as Terrence O'Leary, the Chief Operating Officer of the School District. And we met with them, and we discussed some of the programs that Comcast has provided to provide those Internet access to us. So I'm going to push this over to Derek Cooper, who's going to provide you an overview of Comcast and their programs provided.
Good morning, Commissioners. Honored to be before you today and to talk about this program and the St. Lucie Connect. So what you often hear is that digital divide. And so what is that digital divide? It's those that have the Internet and those that don't. And what we often find is 95% of those in affluent areas have the Internet, and approximately 50% of those households in low incomes don't. So that is that digital divide, that 40, that 55%, 45% we're trying to connect. And so why is it? It's often usually three things. One, affordability. Two, education. Why do I need the Internet? Most of us know why the Internet is essential. Essential for our kids for education. Essential to sign up for benefits. Essential to stay connected with family members. And so what we want to do, and what this program does, is it connects all three of those pieces. It makes it affordable. It educates them as to why it's important working with the school district and the county under your leadership, and then also connecting those individuals to the Internet. So how do we do that? So our Internet Essentials Program, we've had it for more than a decade. Under the program, we've connected more than 10 million low-income Americans to the Internet, more than 1.6 million low-income Floridians. And here in St. Lucie County, about 40,000 low-income St. Lucie County residents have been connected to the Internet. But how has that been done? It's been through education and working through partners. And then during the pandemic, we saw that digital divide really exasperated. And so what this program does, and what the federal government did, is they created what's called the Affordable Connectivity Program. You often hear ACP. What that does is that provides low-income residents that they receive any government assistance, a $30 credit towards their Internet. And so what we have done under our Internet Essentials Program, we've had our first tier, our 9.95, $9.95, has never changed since the lifetime of the program. And then we also created a second tier, which is 29.95. It's 100 megabits, four times the speed of broadband. And that was done specifically because that price point at 29.95 and with the Affordable Connectivity Program makes that credit free. So it makes the Internet free under this program. And the federal government set aside $12 billion. It's an undersubscribed program, so the longevity of this connectivity wouldn't just be a year. You're looking at five years. And with the funds that you would set aside, would also extend that program beyond. So you're looking at more than five years of connecting families and individuals to the Internet. And as I mentioned, our Internet Essentials Program, so having those two tiers and how that would work. Then, under the program, it's critical in working with trusted partners like St. Lucie County, St. Lucie County School District, the Education Foundation, and of course, our community partners, into reaching those individuals and why it's important, why they need to be connected, why those families need it, and why those students need it. And so that takes, as we always say, takes the village. It takes the village to really educate those as to why it's important and working through that. And that's where this partnership comes in, particularly with St. Lucie County School District, who really has that close relationship with the students, knowing those families that need it. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Terrence, and how will we, we will attack that and connect those individuals.
Good morning, Commissioners. What an honor to be here before you and with such a great partnership that we're bringing forth to our families here in St. Lucie County. What we...
Is it not working?
So what I'm just going to review with you is the St. Lucie Public Schools commitment and how we're going to roll this program out, so you have a good understanding. Obviously, we have a goal. The goal is really understanding what the Internet can do for our families here in St. Lucie County, and that's transform lives, strengthen that community, and really inspire new generational leaders. As we go forth, we know the ACP program will affect 62% of our students. These are the free and reduced numbers that we have broken out by school. We also know the IEPP program will help 75% of our schools. All of our schools are Title I schools, and that allows them to qualify to receive the IEPP program. And then the ACP program will affect 62% of our students as we're going through. What are our commitments here with St. Lucie Public Schools? The local touch to our families. We understand where our families are. We understand the churches we need to visit so that they have the trust for us to sign up within the programs. We've worked that. You've heard about 40,000 families. We need to continue to work that and reach out to our students. So we'll be leveraging our help desk. That help desk will be helping them fill out applications, connectivity support, as does Xfinity have their help desk, but we'll be that local outreach to it. The key to longevity is moving the, our families from the IEPP program over to the ACP program. And that's where that assistance will be reaching out to our families, providing assistance, sending our resources out to the homes, out to the churches, marketing them with our communication department, utilizing our robocall, texting, and that information out to market and make that available through our Board meetings, our TV studios, and our social networks. And lastly, we also have a partnership with Microsoft. Microsoft has committed to us to provide every student the ability to take 10 licenses and apply it to any of their household items. So their cell phones, tablets, whatever devices they have in there for free. So while we look at this as students K-12, we really see this program as K-family, because this also gives families opportunities to work within those applications that are very important when they go for job opportunities. So the soft skills needed for those job opportunities, families will have access to all of those products, Microsoft products. So that is our commitment. We are extremely honored and pleasure to be working with you as a partner to make sure that we're serving all of our families with the broadband opportunity.
Thank you, Terrence, Madam Chair. I just want to reiterate, last year, you really gave us a direction and a feat to accomplish because you saw a huge gap in the digital divide. When we shut down in 2020, we saw there were not just 100 students. There were not just thousands. There were tens of thousands of students who did not have Internet at home. And as Terrence had provided, some background is that we had families sitting in parking lots, hooking up to public Wi-Fi, hooking up to buses that were put into different communities with Wi-Fi capabilities. So we saw a real need that needed to be put there, and you accomplished this goal with this partnership. So that's what Comcast coming onboard and providing this program, moving over to the Affordability Connectivity Program, and especially our partnership with the School District, because we'll be able to immediately contact those families that need it the most. So with that, Madam Chair, I close, and hopefully a recommendation approval.
Are there any questions?
I just have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I think this is a great program. I think we all do, and I'm excited for it to really be kicked off. And I actually am filming inside St. Lucie. I'm talking about transit, but I will bring this up during the show today because a lot of people do watch that show. So I will put a plug in for this. Again, thank you for coming at the table because I know that you're a huge impact in doing this partnership. But also, is there, I think to have this really be a success, the county's going to have to get involved with it as well. And so my question is, I don't see Eric, but I know he's around. Is there something that maybe could be put on our website, Mr. Tipton, too, for like a link and a little blurb or something to let people know that this program is available somehow through our website? Because a lot of people do go to us for a lot of the information.
Absolutely. No, we will absolutely be a part of this communication effort. I think, as was mentioned, too, that the key in this really is the education. It's going to take all of us to be a part of it. The technology, the infrastructure is already in the ground. It's just access. And so we want to make sure people understand that. So the county has the opportunity to be a partner in this. We can absolutely use not only our website, but also our social media tools to make sure that we're getting on doing that.
That was what I had brought up yesterday, even, is social media. So I don't know if Eric was brought into the conversation yesterday, Nicole, but that's going to be the key, I think, for us, too, is to have Eric make sure that he really gets the information out there to have this a success. Because if it's known and people know about it, it's going to be implemented and used. So I see Eric stepped out.
Yeah. Commissioner, for the Record, Eric Gill, Communications Director. I have spoken to Lydia Martin, the Director of Communications for School District. She reached out to me this week and said, "We need to partner on this." So it is in the works.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend, I'm going to follow up on what you said and give my kudos also. This is a great program, and I hope eventually, you know, as we become more successful with it, that we will be able to in some way, shape, or form, branch it out. And I shared this yesterday with the team, especially to our senior citizens. They're in just as much need, especially in these high inflation times. They're turning it down. That's usually their only connection to their family members if they don't live here. My second point is, could we encourage not just putting it on our social media or our thing, but the two cities need to be involved just as much as putting it on their sites?
Yes, ma'am. So do you need a motion to approve?
Yes, if there's no further comment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Townsend, seconded by, who did it? Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, B1, County Attorney's Office.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. For the Record, Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri. The next three are interrelated, but we're going to present them separately because I need a motion for each resolution. What you have before you, and B1, is the St. Lucie County Non-Adlorm Revenue Note Series 2022 Line of Credit. The county needs to borrow funds on an interim basis to pay for the cost of capital projects related to the county's water and sewer system. The county reached out to our PFM financial advisors to serve as a financial advisor for the county's proposed Non-Adlorm Revenue Note Series to provide the interim funds for the cost of the capital projects related to the county's water and sewer, and pay the cost of the issuance related to the line. Based on the desire to draw funds down over time to minimize the interest costs and implement in an expedited manner, PFM recommended the county pursue a direct placement line of credit, which in today's market was expected to be efficient and cost-effective method of financing. At the county's direction, PFM distributed a request for proposals on June 13, 2022, based on discussions with county staff. And the bond council, it was determined that US Bank provided the best combination of interest rate and terms most favorable to the county. Therefore, what you have before you is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County authorizing the issuance by St. Lucie County of not to exceed $20 million in aggregate principal amount of a Non-Adlorm Revenue Note Series 2022 of the county to provide funds for the acquisition and construction of certain capital facilities and improvements thereto relating to the water and sewer facilities of St. Lucie County Water and Sewer District, and authorizing the award of the sale of the note upon compliance with certain parameters. Staff is recommending the Board approve the attached resolution, authorize the issuance of the Non-Adlorm Revenue Note Series 2022 Line of Credit, and authorization for the Chair to sign the documents as approved by the county attorney. Staff also recommends the Board approve the recommendation of the county's financial advisor to award the proposal as provided of the line of credit to US Bank. And the Solid Waste and Utilities Director, Mr. Landry, is here if there's any additional questions.
Are there any questions from the Board? I just have one comment, and I know we're going to be doing these on all, separate motions on all ones. I will tell you, this is a proud moment for this county, that they are finally accepting the fact that we can grow up. We can be in charge of our own destiny. And the future is bright in that regard. So this is one of the smartest things I think I've had the joy being a part of. Having said that, is there any other comment or question? If not, is there a motion?
Move. Approval.
Second.
And that's on number one item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. 10B2, we don't need another, it's a continuation, or do you need to go individual again?
If I may just give a brief. It's a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners amending Resolution 21317 of the county relating to the ability of the county to issue additional indebtedness. And we're just changing the language slightly on the anti-dilution test. And staff is recommending approval of the resolution.
Move. Approval.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Townsend, seconded by Commissioner Zdowski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to number three.
Again, if I may, Chair, Commissioners Catherine Barbieri. Again, it is related to the prior two, and this is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners authorizing the execution and delivery of first amendments to loan agreements securing certain prior indebtedness. And this has to do with the fact that we added that language before, so we're going to do an amendment to these loan agreements that are listed in the resolution. And staff is recommending approval.
There any, no questions? Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Townsend, seconded by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Before moving on to the next item, I would just like to recognize that we have Mr. Luck, who is the Regional Manager for our Chief Financial Officer here in the state of Florida. If you'd like to stand and be recognized. Thank you for being here, and you just witnessed history. So you couldn't have picked a better time.
And Madam Chair, I just wanted just a quick comment on what we've just done. You know, the county has been a pay-as-you-go, very conservative in establishing debt. And as we see the growth that's about to unfold here, we have to prepare for that growth. And in doing so, it's all about the life, health, and safety with water and sewer. It's a foundational element that helps our citizens grow and prosper.
It is. Thank you. Moving on to item number four has been pulled. This is the Fort Pierce FPUA's wastewater rate increase, water and wastewater rate increase. That should be coming back into the month of August, back to our Board.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to make a comment to that, though. I've received a lot of calls, friend to my offices, I'm sure you have. I want to make it clear to those that watch. This is a Fort Pierce Utilities Authority decision, not our decision. However, because of that decision and where we purchase our water from them, it is going to affect us, but this Board has had nothing to do with what has happened.
Nor are we allowed to.
Correct. It's all on the FPUA. Thank you. George, we're just keeping, making sure you're awake.
We'll move on to item number five, Transit Advertising Policy. County Attorney's Office will be taking this.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, again, for the Record, Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri. What you have before you is the Transit Advertising Policy. As you're aware, area or regional transit is the public transit system created and operated by St. Lucie County. The county owns the buses, the bus shelters. The county owns the buses, the bus shelters and intermodal transit facilities. The art system is a vital component of the various public services the county provides within its service area. The transit operations are funded by federal, state and local funds as well as grants. And to maximize and generate revenues to supplement funds and cover unfunded operating costs, the county elected to use an independent contractor, Clear Channel Outdoor, to manage the advertising services on its buses. Advertising revenues are important revenue that supports transit operations and augments the county's transit operating budget. What you have before you is a policy that would direct how the advertising is so that it provides a signal of what the county wants and how its image they want it to be. And staff is recommending approval. The art advertising policy is drafted by the County Attorney's Office.
Are there any questions, staff?
I have a couple of comments.
Yes ma'am.
For me personally, I think because of the recent change with the name and the buses and the wraps and the artist and everything and the artwork we put up there, I would like to see the buses and moving forward not have advertisement like on the whole bus or across the whole window. I think the proposal that I saw for the buses had like a little like board hanging down where it had had art and what it was and the phone number. Maybe that was shifted to the back of the bus. And in that little column thing right there, maybe the advertisement could be "This bus sponsored by", and then that'd be where the ad goes to not have to have all the time and effort that's went in to making the buses as nice as they're going to be, be wrapped with all the advertisement. But to just keep the advertisement to one small area where it looks like, I forget what it is. Is Diana or Kathy here? There's, did y'all see the bus mock-up that they had given? There's like a little frame hanging down and that's where they say "Art in Public Places", or I mean "Art Area Regional Transit", the phone number. Maybe if that's where the ad went and then the rest of the bus remained showing off the artwork and the buses and everything, to keep it to a designated area and not just be able to go over the whole bus like they have in the past.
I see Diane coming up. Diane, I'm sorry. Yes, Commissioner.
I just, I appreciate your idea, but I just, my concern would be losing the revenue that would be, you know, coming thin. Because that was a, and this actually came true back in 2010 when we were suffering from the recession. And it was actually helpful to try and help fund the buses. And so that would be my only concern is that revenue.
But I agree, Commissioner Zadowski. I know it's revenue for us, which I questioned in conversations with Dan. Realistically, is this a First Amendment conversation? But I don't, I trust Dan's judgment and what the language says. But I think that the advertisement is a revenue stream that we don't need to give up. I think it can only become stronger. But I think with all the efforts that's went into these buses and we are having the artwork put on the buses and we're rebranding the buses, is it going to take away from all the effort we just put into it by having advertisement and people's advertisement wrapped on the bus? And then have the emphasis of the art brought down some? Or it can still be a revenue stream because they're going to have advertisement on there. But instead of having their advertisement across the whole bus, they're going to have a section in the middle of the bus where it's like a frame and that will be where the advertisement will go. To not take away from the artwork and the wrap and the stuff that's being done on the buses. I wish you had a picture of it. Diana, come on.
I'll draw one. Commissioners Diana Waslawski, Director of Community Services. So we're kind of in this transition where we are getting new buses. And the new buses are the ones that are having the wraps. We have that new beautiful flamingo on one of the buses. So some of the older buses that you're seeing are the older advertisements that we have on them. But we are making this transition to where the advertisement is smaller. So I can get you the information on, you know, the new buses we're receiving and the ones that we'll be phasing out and kind of when. And those old advertisement where it's a total wrap over the windows and everything. So we're not embracing that anymore. The new buses will have a smaller type advertisement. But I can get you, if you all would like, I'll get you, you know, the number of buses with the full wraps and what we plan to do and when we're phasing those out. And again, we're like everybody else, a difficulty. We've had new buses on order for almost two years and we're still trying to get them. So, but anyways, I think everything that you have mentioned is the direction that we're taking.
Okay, that's nice. And I'm sure that Catherine, correct me if I'm wrong, this is just basically about the policy of what can and can't be advertised on it. But I wanted to take advantage of bringing that up since we were talking about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So yes, I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion, is there, by Commissioner Townsend, seconded by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And moving on to our next second biggest thing for the day. Setting the proposed millage rates for the 2022-23 budget. Mr. Tipton, I assume you're going to lead this.
I will. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this item is a result of the budget workshops that we had earlier in July. As you know, the county is required to provide the property appraiser with the proposed millage rates, the rollback rates and the date, time and place. The tentative millage, tentative budget hearing will take place. This must be done within 35 days of the property appraiser certification of the values, which typically takes place by July 1st. So we need to get this done by August 5th. The presentation that you're about to hear from the OMB Director, Jennifer Hill, will walk you through the rates. And I would just like to reiterate, and I know that she will as well, that what we are talking about are the maximum millage rates that can, that the board will approve at this point, which means you're setting the ceiling, not the floor. As we go through the budget hearing process in September, the board has a chance to review the rates and may further reduce them. May not increase them, however, without re-noticing all of the taxpayers. So it's an important point. There's still, you know, additional conversations that can be had. But for today's purposes, we are setting the ceiling in terms of the millage rates. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Thank you. Good morning, Board, or Chair Commissioners. Just sorry about that, technical difficulty. As Howard mentioned, this is a kind of a wrap-up and the conclusion of the budget workshops that we had the week before last. Those concluded on July 8th. Today, we're asking you to set the maximum millage rates. These are where each individual millage rate that is adopted today cannot be increased without re-noticing, which is something we don't want to do. So the level that we set today, it ends up being the maximum rate throughout the process at our public hearings on September 8th and 22nd. We will continue to talk about the budget and the millage rates. And at that time, those rates could potentially go down, but they can't go up. And so today, we're going to just cover some quick background information on the county's budget. And at the end, we're going to ask you to adopt those, the millage rates for the per-property tax notices and set the dates for the public hearings. As we discussed in the budget workshops, when we go through the budget process, we want to focus not only on the needs of today, but the steps that we must take to prepare us for the future. And this can be a challenge for a rapidly growing community. The University of Florida's Bureau of Economic and Business Research provides low, medium and high population projections for counties. Historical growth has been much higher than the high projection, which appears to us to be the most likely of the three scenarios. This scenario has St. Lucy County reaching a population of 600,000 by the year 2050. We need to plan for the high projection because if we plan for less, we may not be able to catch up and recover. If we look back 12 years, the county's budget is going from 592 million to a recommended 700.9 million, with the population that has gone from 280,000 to a forecasted 355,000 or a 75,000 increase. At this time, the budget has increased, over this time, the budget has increased 18% while the population has grown by 27%. And as population continues to increase, we can expect further budget increases. The county is operating with 102 less positions than in 2007. For next year, we will be operating with a workforce that was the size it was in 2005. And over that 18-year period, our population is projected to have grown by approximately 47% or 113,000 residents. While we are working smarter, operating leaner and more effectively, we are still seeing impact of staff and services. As population increases, so will staffing needs. With reduced property values, in the past, there had been adjustments to millage rates to provide needed services. There were adjustments in 2016 and 2018 when the board found it appropriate to increase the millage rate to fund increases in the sheriff's budget. In fiscal year 21, the board decreased the general fund and fine and forfeiture millage rates by .1 mils. For the year we're currently in, we reduced it by .25 mils. And the recommended budget has them being reduced by another .2530 mils. And the recommended budget also has millage rate reductions in some of our other taxing districts. For the coming year, the property values have increased by 17.8% countywide, with the city of Port St. Lucie increasing by 23.3%, Fort Pierce increasing by 15.3%, and the unincorporated area increasing by 10.8%. Property taxes in the state of Florida are very complex. The formula for property taxes levied equals the millage rate times the assessed property value divided by 1,000. The taxes collected are influenced by two factors, the millage rate and the assessed value. The aggregate millage rate expresses the average tax rate. This is the rate obtained by dividing the sum of all of the property taxes levied by the county divided by the taxable value of the county. The first factor in the taxes levied is the millage rate. For the current fiscal year, fiscal year 22, the aggregate millage rate levied by all taxing districts in St. Lucy County was 22.8542 mils. Of that, 8.5604 mils were levied by the St. Lucy County Board of County Commissioners, which also includes funding for the constitutional officers, dependent districts and municipal service taxing units. As we're discussing, we'll discuss further, we are recommending a millage rate reduction and it will take a collective effort by all taxing agencies to be able to make a significant impact on the overall tax bill. The second factor in the taxes levied is the property value. This year, the highest per capita property value was Monroe County at $380,444. The lowest was Union County at $18,591. The statewide average was $102,919 per capita, while St. Lucy County's value was $75,501 per capita. Our property value is 27% lower than the statewide average. We further analyze the taxes on the tax bill that each Board of County Commissioners has control over. The services under the jurisdictions of each Board of County Commissioners can vary. The lowest aggregate millage rate was Monroe County at 3.3679 mils. The highest was Dixie County at 13 mils. For the 67 Florida counties, the average millage rate was 8.0080 mils. The St. Lucy County millage rate was 8.5604 mils. This graph shows the lowest per capita taxes at $186 for Union County, the highest at $1,496 for Martin County, statewide average of $706, and St. Lucy County at $646. So in summary, while St. Lucy County's millage rate is higher than the average statewide rate, St. Lucy County's value is lower than the statewide average. And when you take those two factors together, it results in St. Lucy County's property taxes being slightly below the statewide average. So when we look forward to the coming years, we, first, we look backwards at some historical expenditures and see where some of our trends are going. And we look back to just prior to the pandemic when the board had completed its five-year plan to get us to a point where we were finally financially sustainable after nearly a decade of operating deficits. This effort had us going into the pandemic on solid ground. When the pandemic hit, the county immediately put purchasing freezes in place that remained in place for that fiscal year. And additionally, some expenses that would normally have been paid by the county were eligible out of grant funds. And because of these two factors, the expenses in 2020 were actually far less than normal. But then in 2021, that, those savings were allocated out by the board, which caused fiscal year 2021 to actually have expenditures exceeding revenue. But that was because of a one-time windfalls in savings related to what happened the year before. So while that is normally something we watch out for, it was an expected turn of events. So, and, and our forecasts going forward have us remaining sustainable. And so that was really just relating to the timing events. But moving forward, we've conservatively projected our revenues and expenses to show that we still believe we are in a sustainable situation. And some of the, some of the assumptions we used in our projections that are pretty conservative are on the revenue side, that for this coming year, that we're going to have the 17.79% property value increase that the property appraiser has certified. But then in the coming two years, we're reducing that down to 4%. Now, in the current environment, that, that is probably on the conservative side. But we know that things are changing in the economy right now. And so when we look at some of our other revenues, our half-cent sales tax, we are showing as an increasing by 4% next year and 3% the following year. And then on our expense side, we're showing 3% increases in salaries for the Board of County Commissioners and Constitution offices in the coming years past the projected budget. For pretty much everything else for fiscal year 23, we're assuming that all of the, all of the things that were included in the recommended budget that was distributed to you and discussed during the budget workshops, all of those things were included with the exception of, I think there were three or four things at the end of the workshops that the board directed us to remove out of the budget.
Madam Chair, before we go too far, Jennifer, I just want to clarify something you said earlier in this slide. And it has to do with, you used the term deficit. We never budget by borrowing money. We're not the federal government. We don't borrow. We always have a balanced budget. So, and this is a period of time, I'd like to have that little walk down history lane. And we went through the recession in 2008, '09, '10, and literally we had lost $11 billion in values. So for approximately 10 years, this county had been operating on reserves. And so when we talk about deficit, it was the reserves that was building back and creating the opportunity to have a balanced budget.
Correct. By state law, the county has to have a balanced budget. So we don't have, we don't have the same authority to have a deficit budget like the federal government. However, when I say deficit, and I know, I know you prefer using a different term, but it's been ingrained in my, in my brain over the last 15 years. But what I'm actually talking about is that at the end of the day, the amount of revenue we brought in didn't, was not as much as the amount of expenditures or the amount of bills we paid out at the end of the year, which caused us to, our balances to drop in those reserve, those reserve balances. We were lucky going into the Great Recession that we had very healthy fund balances. But it is not a sustainable situation to, to, to go into that where we're just spending it down every year. We knew that, we knew that eventually we would hit rock bottom and we would, we would have no choice but to, to get out of that situation because we can't legally adopt a deficit budget.
But that goes back to the complicated, you know, equation in which, for instance, you know, some folks are getting, going to get their trim notice and there'd be two houses side by side, one that has been owned for 20 years, one that was purchased yesterday. And they'll have vastly different, you know, taxable values. One will pay less than the one that owned for 20 years with a 3% increase. increase CPI, and the other one with the current value. So, that's why it's so complicated, and it's always good to have this conversation as we, we develop the, the trim notice to be sent out, because we will get those, those phone calls. And so, for, as we go through this process, and those at home are listening, when they get their trim notice, I suggest that they contact the property appraisers office to talk through the trim notice so that they can actually better understand where they are in, in their process.
Commissioner Zadalski, I'll follow up on that. It's one of the reasons why during our public hearings, we actually ask the property appraiser to be here, and she's been gracious enough to be here every year. Representation to help explain, because many people do not understand their tax bill.
Yep. Thank you.
So, going back to the projections, a couple other things that are in these projections is that our health insurance increases for the, for the fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five are going to be ten percent increases. Actually, in twenty-three, we're experiencing fifteen percent increase, but the coming years, ten percent. And then, for CPI, for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, we're working under the assumption that we're going to get back to more reasonable levels of inflation, so we have plugged in four percent for twenty-four and three percent for twenty-five. Now, in the current environment, that is inflation numbers might end up being worse off than our projections, but the hope is that, that on the, on the, on the revenue side, that, that the assumptions that we have for our sales tax and our property values, if everything's going up, we expect the revenue side to go up as well. And so, we do feel like this is a pretty conservative projection, and it does still have, show us, being out of that historical situation that we were in, where our operating expenses were exceeding our revenues, we showed that we, we should be able to, to hold our own. But some of the things that the model does and address are potential storm expenses, you know, the unknown of the emergencies, any staff increases or related to trying to increase service levels. I mentioned in, in the coming budget, so for fiscal year twenty-three, we do have all of the things that we've put in the proposed budget, which includes, for example, adding library hours on, on Monday at two of the libraries. So, those, those service levels are in this projection, but aside from those services that we've addressed in this budget, we don't have anything projected in here as service level increases for the out-years. And some of the good news is, you know, when it comes to the projections, while there's much unknown about the current environment, this year's already halfway over, and the property values are worked on a January versus January comparison, and, and we feel that even though there's a lot of uncertainty, we're still in, in very healthy situation on property values, as well as what we're seeing on sales tax collections related to growth, and particularly where we've, we've started receiving some more revenue related to online sales. Oops, I'm sorry. This slide just reiterates all of the things I just said about the forecast. And so, going into the actual fiscal year twenty-three budget, specifically some of the incremental changes that were in there of comparing fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-three. And so, the actual property taxes in the general fund and fine and forfeiture fund generate an additional thirty-point-seven million dollars before we reduce the millage rate, and then in the law enforcement MSTU is about another six-hundred-thousand dollars. However, the proposed budget now reflects a point-two-five-three-zero mil reduction, which reduces that by about seven-point-two million. And so, after that adjustment, we're looking at approximately twenty-four million dollars in additional revenue. And so, the first thing we do with that revenue is make sure that we cover any state mandates, constitutional officers, judicial agencies, outside agencies, and the other things that are kind of mostly outside of our control and, and not under, you know, the Board's general direction. And that, those increases account for about eleven-point-two million dollars of that twenty-four million dollars, which leaves about twelve-point-nine million to be allocated by the Board. And when we look at that twelve-point-nine million, we first allocated funding to main the, maintain the existing service levels. This included Florida retirement system increases, which are mandated by the state, wage adjustments, health insurance increases. We've included funding for parks as we are in the last year of our Parks MSTU, and we plan to phase out the need for a separate tax. We're also addressing funding in areas such as turnover issues for our nine-one-one operators, an increase in our liability insurance, inflationary increases, and fuel increases. After we funded these maintenance items and to maintain the existing service levels, we're left with six-point-four million dollars. We then started to allocate funding to advance some of the county services. Here, we increased funding for capital, transit services, added some positions in various departments, recommended restoring hours at two of the libraries so that we can have service on Mondays, and we're also recommending increasing funding for affordable housing, invasive plant management, information technology needs, landscaping, and attorney services. And so, with all of that allocated, you know, when we went through the budget workshops, we started off with a recommended budget that included reductions in the fine and forfeiture fund, the Parks MSTU, and the South Hutchinson Island Beach Erosion Control. And when you took all of those together, it accounted for a point-two-nine-four-one aggregate millage rate reduction. As we went through the workshops, you know, we did get direction from you to try to decrease those further, and, and we did so. And so, there's two key areas that we reduced. The fine and forfeiture fund, the original recommendation was to reduce it by point-two mils. The updated recommendation is to reduce it by point-two-five-three mils. We're still leaving the Parks MSTU the same as the original recommendation, and then the South Hutchinson Beach Erosion Control Millage, the original recommendation was to reduce it by point-zero-six-one-three mils. The updated recommendation, which includes funding approximately thirteen percent of the beach project local share out of the erosion district, which equates to the, the proportion of the linear feet of shoreline related to Dolman, Waveland, and Normandy Beach. So, with, with that thirteen percent of the project funded out of a different funding source, we are able to reduce it by point-one-two-one-three mils instead of the point-zero-six-one-three mils. That, that millage rate will be looked at further once the Army Corps does the closeout of its project, which we expect later this year. When that happens, what has happened with the thirteen percent, what we did is we took the thirteen percent of the project cost, and we budgeted that amount in, in totality in the erosion control fund, and then we're expecting money from the Army Corps. And once we get the money back from the Army Corps, we're going to reanalyze the funding needs and, and look to pay down the debt service. And once we're able to, to pay down the debt service and recalculate that amortization schedule, we'll have a better understanding of what to expect in, in coming years. So, assuming we actually get a substantial amount back from the Army Corps, I would expect this millage rate to go down further. I'm not sure if it will happen between now and September, but certainly by next year, we should expect that, assuming that we do get money back from the Army Corps that gives us some, some, some windfall in, in that fund. But in the meantime, we're able to reduce it by taking that thirteen percent and dividing it over the seven years that are left on the debt service payments. Overall, with all that being said, that millage rate reduction for the aggregate millage rate, now instead of being point-two-nine-four-one mils, now we're up to a reduction of point-three-four-nine-nine And what that does to the tax bill, and the millage rate, and how it affects the, each individual property owner, is, so if, if they're a homeowner living in one of the cities or in the unincorporated area outside of South Hutchinson Island, the original projections are, for the original recommendations, would have had those going down for an average three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar homesteaded home, those would have been going down eighty dollars, and then South Hutch would have gone down ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. However, with the Board's guidance and direction, what we've been able to reduce it to was for the cities in the unincorporated area outside of South Hutch, for that same three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar homesteaded home, the, the millage rate reduction would equate to ninety-six dollars and ninety-six cents reduction, and on South Hutch, it would be equate to point, I'm sorry, a hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents related to that millage rate reduction. And so, that really concludes my presentation. The dates that we are recommending for the budget hearings are September eighth for the tentative hearing, that would be at six P.M. here in these chambers, and September twenty-second for the final hearing.
Madam Chair, I'll just add one additional final comment to this, and I, and I mentioned it last week. The, the Board, three years ago, set a goal to reduce the millage rates countywide. With this budget proposal, you have surpassed that goal by thirty percent, and you are returning back to the taxpayers every year now with this eighteen million dollars. And so, it's a, it's a substantial reduction in over a three-year period of time, certainly recognizing the growth, but I think also the fiscal stewardship that this Board provides, and I just wanted to make sure I got that out there.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I'll just make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
It's no secret that in the past, I did not support the budget millage rate. So, I'm happy to say that this year, I think that we are recognizing what the residents of St. Lucie County has given to us. We are recognizing that the funding and our success has been because they have believed in us and know that we do not overspend, and we're conservative, all of us on this Board. And so, Howard, again, I want to say thank you and Jennifer, because I know that this is a tough thing for y'all to do, and we, it was a blessing. Like, you built the budget on nine, it came back at fourteen, it ended up at seventeen. So, this was a gift, and it was a lottery, I think, for our residents, and I think it was a win for all of us sitting up here, because I, I'm going to bet the last week or two after our budget, feeling really good about the decision this Board's doing this year, and I, I'm hopeful that the residents will now stand up. We have a referendum moving forward. I don't believe that that would have been followed through had we not done what we're doing this year. So, I just want to say thank you to the rest of this Board and recognizing the gift that the residents have given us, and we are finally giving back to them what they deserve, so thank you.
Are there any other comments? Just as a reminder, this is just setting the tentative. What this does is allow the trim notices to go out. What it also doesn't allow is that the millage cannot be increased from what it's set today. It can only go lower. And Commissioner Townsend, I'll follow up just briefly, and really save a lot of the comments for when we actually do the hearings, but I want to express my thanks to the staff also in regards to our budgets this year, and also for accepting, which I know is probably a little bit of a pain, that the Board wanted to go a little bit deeper, Ms. Commissioner Townsend said to give back to our residents, so we thank you for working side by side with us during this past, that past week. So, if there's no further comments, is there a motion?
Motion.
If I could, just to get clarification, can we do it all in one motion, setting the dates and the millage?
Yes.
All right, and for the record, whoever makes the motion, if you could repeat the millage rate, ah, the millage, the tentative millage along with the dates in your motion.
Okay.
I know.
Where'd it go?
Jennifer, you can help us out.
Okay. So, well, so, look, and this is, this process is a little less formal than the process in September where we have to announce each one, and it has to be formally part of the record. This is really giving us, us as staff, permission to fill out the property appraiser forms. But I'll, how about I read the recommendation and then?
Right, that's fine.
Okay. So, staff is recommending board approval to set the millage rates in order to comply with the truth in millage requirements by advising the property appraisers office of the millage rates as outlined on the worksheet analysis of rollback millage rate fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-three for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-three, under the column headed to twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three millage, as well as setting two public hearings on September eighth, the tentative budget hearing, and September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, the final budget hearing at six P.M. in the Roger Poitras Administration Annex Commission chamber.
Move approval staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Zadalski, and seconded by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next, thank you very much, Jennifer. Next on our agenda is the update from Mitae, Planning and Development.
Mitae Santa Maria. Oh, sorry. Good morning again, Mitae Santa Maria, Director of Planning and Development Services, and I'm going to be presenting the administrative approvals for May and June. So, the first item is Arcosa. It is a minor adjustment to a conditional use permit to increase the overall building area for the office and manufacturing building from about eighty-one-thousand square feet to about eighty-eight-thousand square feet, to decrease the outdoor product, excuse me, outdoor product laydown yard from four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand square feet to three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand square feet, and to update the project ownership details. This includes a minor site plan approval to develop the concrete manufacturing facility consisting of the manufacturing building, the office, the aggregate storage containers, a sixty-foot-tall silo, and the three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-square-feet outdoor product laydown yard, right-of-way improvements to Favorite Road with associated site vehicular, stormwater, and landscaping improvements. And this project is located on Favorite Road west of Selvets within the Casson's mixed-use activity area. The second item is the Florida Architectural Precast. It is a minor adjustment to a minor site plan to add a hundred-and-fifty-by-seventy-five, seventy-nine square foot finished material staging area, a twenty-five-by-twenty-five concrete pad for concrete mixing system and support site improvements, and this is located at twenty-seven-oh-one Industrial Avenue Three within the airport industrial park. And the third item is a Class A mobile home. The property owners received authorization to install a twenty-four-by-thirty-six-foot mobile home on a ten-point-two-two-acre parcel of land. The property is located on the south side of Germany Canal Road, approximately three-point-nine-three miles south of Okeechobee Road, and the property is zoned AG five with a future land use designation of AG five as well. And that concludes the updates for this month. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for the update. And our final item on today's regular agenda is going to be public safety presentation or update, I should say.
The Animal Safety Division would like to offer outreach events for the public. There's two events in particular. For the month of August, National Check Your Chip Day, and then for the month of September, World Rabies Day. The importance of these two days is the amount of stray animals that get impounded to any shelter. They're likely- Their likelihood to go home is very slim. If they have microchips, you know, we can get them home before they actually get brought into the shelter, which, which helps reduce the total intake of stray animals. As well as the National Check Your Chip Day, that gives the opportunity for pet owners to bring their animals to us. We can scan them with our, our scanners and make sure that the information is up to date. That is another issue with microchips. They're nice, but if you don't update your information, there's no way we can get your animal home. Same thing goes for when people adopt animals from a shelter. They don't follow through and register the chip into their name, which leads to a dead-end microchip. World Rabies Day, it's a national event, which brings to the forefront the importance of vaccinating your pets against rabies. In the United States, you know, we're very, very fortunate to have really good protocols. But unfortunately, what I've noticed in this community, there's a lot of people that can't afford to take their animals to the vet. I have searched around for St. Lucie County, any vaccine clinics, low-cost clinics, there are none. So when we have animals brought into the shelter and they get their warning for, you know, getting your registration, their biggest complaint is they can't afford to take the animal to the vet. So World Rabies Day, if we offer this every year, which it falls on September 28th, at least they can time out that every year, they can come to us, get a rabies vaccine so they can be in compliance, keep their animal healthy. With these two events, we are partnering with our current contracted veterinarian to offer these services to the residents. We are requesting that we be able to offer these two items at no charge to our residents. The microchips themselves, they cost us about $7.25 each. They are a lifetime registration, so the owners never have to pay to update the information. If they give their animal away, the new owner doesn't have to pay to get it updated, which encourages them to please update their microchips. For the September event, like I said, it falls on September 28th, which is a Wednesday. We actually plan on doing the event on a Saturday, which hopefully will give us more of an outcome with residents coming not during a workday. And it's going to be a drive-up event. Dr. Adams is the veterinarian that's going to be assisting with those vaccines. He does have a mobile premise permit, so that won't be an issue, and it will be held at the county fairgrounds. So for staff recommendations, we recommend the board approval for fee waiver for the microshipping, as approved by the county attorney.
Vice Chair, can you, I just need you to, I think you gave a lot of information and said the dates are out there for everybody that's listening. The microchip day is actually going to be on August.
So the Check Your Chip Day, it falls on August 15th.
15th.
And what we plan on doing for that, because that's during, that's a Monday, we plan on offering this service that entire week of August 15th. And we will put out information, get it on our website. I'll work with Eric to get that, that message out there as well.
And then the rabies vaccinations is going to be not on the 28th, but September?
24th.
24th. Okay, just wanted to clarify for the public. Thank you.
And Commissioner, I'm going to follow back up on that for clarification. It's my understanding this is for the unincorporated residents.
Yes, ma'am.
If they live within the cities, I would hope the cities are doing the very same.
Correct. And possibly in the future, if they want to do a joint effort, we can possibly do a joint effort in the future with cost sharing.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the board?
Move approval.
There's a motion by Commissioner Townsend, there's a second by Commissioner Zadalski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion once again passes. We've reached, thank you. We've reached the end of today's meeting. Mr. Tipton, do you have any announcements?
I do, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'd just take a minute, though, and, and talk about, this has been a short meeting, but it's been one of the most transformative meetings, I think, that this board has had since I've been here in my seven and a half years. You've just approved one of the largest tentative millage reductions in our history. You've approved, moving forward, with the first step in the expansion of our utilities, which is historic. And then the third piece was the broadband discussion and, and making sure that, that our community is a, is a smart community, it's a smart city, smart county. And each one of those is a big day, but doing all three in one day is just remarkable. So I just, I just want to pause and recognize that.
And before you go on, just the special meeting of, of what we were doing with the airport contracting with an, an agency that's going to help transform the airport. I mean, again.
Absolutely, yeah. Just, yeah, in the last two weeks, you, you have a private investor that's committed $30 million in future airport investments and adding another 1,700 employees and bringing our annual economic impact out at the airport to three quarters of a billion dollars. So, yeah, it's, it's been a good month so far. In terms of announcements, our next informal meeting and regular meeting will take place on August 9th at 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM respectively. And that's all I have.
Right, thank you. Any comments from the staff, board? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Same move.
We are adjourned. We'll come to order St. Lucie County Erosion District. First on the agenda is approval of, I'm sorry, is general public comment. Seeing no one, we'll move forward with the approval of the minutes from June 7th and July 5th. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
There's a motion by Commissioner Zadalski. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We'll move on to today's consent agenda. If there's no questions, is there a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Townsend, second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor?
Aye.
We've reached the end of the agenda for the erosion district. Is there a motion to?
Same move.
Thank you.
We'll come to order for the mosquito control district. Is there any general public comment? Seeing none, we'll close. We'll come back to the approval of the minutes for the June 7th.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. The consent agenda, there's warrants, is there any?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Seeing none, there's no regular agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
We come together as a sustainability district. Open public comment, is there anybody who wishes to address the board? Seeing no moment, I will close public comment. There are no minutes to approve. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There are no items on the regular agenda. I have a motion to adjourn.
Same move.
Thank you very much.